... In the county. In the county. Not a topic. Not a lot of work. We should have. Okay. She really does look very crazy sometimes. So, you're... Later, she's a very great lady. Um... Right, of course. She makes me feel... Nice down there. Great little... Great little...
I mean, I've got whatever reason you want. She's got to talk to me. Unless me and you from over here, we got that.
Follow it up on the invitation. You know, since you want some... I think you can apply my due. That's...
You would be.
All right. We just started the public hearing. Public hearing. Ordinance number nineteen dash oh nine. And ordinance for me and Dawson County Code of Ordinance, Chapter two. Administration Article four, laws of business and duties. Section two dash oh four. Enumeration and Chapter eighteen, emergency services. Article ten, amnesties. Section eighteen dash fifty-two. Ambulance service commission. Section eighteen dash fifty-six. Unlawful operating without franchises. Section eighteen dash fifty-seven. Reporting procedures and sections eighteen fifty-eight. Limits of members' liability regarding the ambulance commission and ambulance service district and established as effective basis. Ordinance second reading. Does anyone wish to speak on ordinance number nineteen dash oh nine? If not, I declare ordinance number nineteen oh nine closed. One B. Ordinance number nineteen dash ten. An ordinance authorizing the executive and delivery of a fee agreed by between Dawson County, South Carolina and Project Heaway, providing for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. Second reading. Does anyone wish to speak to ordinance nineteen dash oh two? If not, I declare ordinance number nineteen dash ten closed. One D. Ordinance number nineteen dash ten. An ordinance authorizing the executive and delivery of a fee agreed by between Dawson County, South Carolina and Project Heaway, providing for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. Second reading. Does anyone wish to speak to ordinance nineteen dash oh two? If not, I declare ordinance number nineteen dash ten closed. Ordinance one C. Ordinance number nineteen dash eleven. An ordinance will be in Dawson County Code of Ordinance, Chapter two. Administration Article five. Finance and Chapter forty-six. Purchasing and updating and clarifying county budgeting and purchasing regulations and established effective basis of ordinance. Second reading. Anyone wish to speak to ordinance number nineteen dash eleven? If not, I declare ordinance number nineteen dash eleven closed. One D. Ordinance number nineteen dash twelve. Authorizing pursuant to Act twelve, Chapter forty-four, the federal law of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended. The exceptions and purely appeal, lieu of ad valorem taxes agreed by between Dawson County, South Carolina and certain covenants identified collectively or to time being as project dates two. Divide the fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes intended for certain special source revenue credits and other related matters. Second reading. Does anyone wish to speak to ordinance number nineteen dash twelve? If not, I declare ordinance number nineteen dash twelve closed. One E. Ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen. To amend the existing agreements governing Dawson and Florence industrial park signed between Dawson County, South Carolina and Florence County, South Carolina to enlarge the batteries of the industrial park included certain properties now or to be hereafter owned and or operated by covenants identified for the time being as project dates located in Dawson and Florence counties in South Carolina so far than other related matters. Second reading. Anyone wish to speak on ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen? If not, I declare ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen closed. We will call to order an invocation and pledge, Mr. Douglas and Miss Thomas.
Father God, we want to thank you, oh Lord, for last night's rest and the fame of church of welcome and love to us. Father God, we just want to thank you, oh Lord, for starting us on a new day and closing that right now. And Father God, we ask you, oh Lord, to come and support us. Touch each and every one that has a tear in their life. Give them some strength. And Father God, we ask you, oh Lord, to go with us, homes, hospitals, wherever there's sick, you know, oh Lord. Father, we ask you to touch them, oh Lord. Father, we know that you are the one who did them well. Father, we know that you have more mercy than you have in your garment than in the drugstore much so well. And Father God, we ask you, oh Lord, if you were sent to foreign countries, touch our boys, girl, men, and give them some foresight as soon as they come along one day. And Father God, we ask you, oh Lord, to believe us and guide us to just meet in your name and say, amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, this time I move to amend the agenda to bring forward item nine B. Resolution number seven oh two. A proclamation recognizing and honoring Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens for her one-hundredth birthday.
At this time, I'd like to call Sister Michael, the Hospital City Council. Oh, she's behind.
This time, I'd like to read resolution number seven oh two. A proclamation recognizing and honoring Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens, one-hundredth birthday. Whereas Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens was born May twenty-third, nineteen seventeen, in Chesterfield County, and later moved to the Green Hill community of Darlington County, South Carolina, where she attended Green Hill Community School in Hartsville. And whereas Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens raised her seven children, Bonnie, John, Mary, Essie, Clarence, Hardy, and Jamie. After the death of her sisters, she also raised her sisters' four children, Sarah, James, Evelyn, and Verna Gray. And whereas from nineteen sixty-eight to two thousand and fourteen, Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens woke up every morning around six a.m. to open her doors for the neighbors' kids, fed them breakfast, made sure they stayed warm and safe. And whereas Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens has been referred to as the missionary of the community because she helped anyone who was sick or in need. And whereas Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens attended Green Hill Missionary Baptist Church, where she is recognized and honored as the mother of the church. And whereas Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens hobbies include candy, especially vegetable soup, and quilting. And whereas on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, members of the South Carolina Senate by resolution recognized and congratulated Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens on the occasion of her one-hundredth birthday. And whereas on May twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, Mary McCarland Stevens attained the age of one hundred and two, two years old, an incredible milestone in her life. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that members of Darlington County Council wish to recognize and congratulate Mary Magdalene McCarland Stevens upon the celebration of her one-hundredth birthday and wish her meeting four jingle birthdays adopted this third day, June two thousand and nineteen. Thank you, Mr. McCarland. Glad to have you here, one hundred and two years old. That's... I might be a little... Happy birthday, May twenty-third.
For the rest of our kids, children, please stand. The rest of our children, please. Thank you. At this time, where they come with all the members of Green Hill State, please. My favorite. Thank you.
Chief.
We wish you, thank you all, for recognizing and...
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with citizens' comments. Mr. George Cannon.
Good evening, everyone. I guess everyone gave a look for gun and rifle. You used to see me standing here, but I'm still speaking of the drainage problem. As preceding, I visit a neighborhood of a shameful to compare one's community with mine. And I would like to know why, how, when, under this weather, search is cleaning ditches now, we're being neglected right now, we're going to do a great job while we get in and borrow with every machine to clean these ditches, plus the battery of the mosquitoes that already started hitting us in the neighborhood. But we lacking something bad somewhere else, somehow, somebody, suffering needs to be said about the community that I live. Even the paper should say something or write something somewhere on the community. If not, I take them to the community that I visit today to see like day and night between the two. And this not just for one year, last year and the year before, that we constantly, or just because I'm standing here alone, that the county neglecting me, or just the idea that money's not to be spent in my community, if one of the two or something, somehow. Better yet, if you would like to see for yourself, just visit Russell Road, Lake, um, Martin Luther King, and all of them. See for yourself, nothing else, but what I've been saying here for years. Please, help me somewhere, somehow, somebody, and better yet, even say a prayer for me. That's no joke neither. Please, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. George. Anything else?
Twenty-eight and oh, twenty-nine and oh, fifty and oh. Zero is what tells the importance of how good you are. Hartsville softball team went twenty-nine and zero. Nobody touched all year long. Can't do better than that. If the twenty-nine is not the importance, that zero says that everybody we played, we were better than you. And so, I want to give credit for Hartsville softball team for an outstanding job this year. Super, great. Uh, but I hope to be back up here again better.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. Don't we normally recognize the Hartsville State Campaigns with a resolution?
Mr. Jimmy Epling.
Some of you may already know me. I'm Jimmy Epling, the director of the library system. On behalf of the board and the staff, I want to thank you all for your support for the library. And what I've provided you with is a packet of information. It has in it what you might say our annual report, some facts about the library as far as number of visitors. We had two hundred and eighty thousand visitors last year and circulated quite a lot of materials. But inside that packet, every year, we have a summer reading program. And each location is different, each range is different. And you've got to schedule what's going on in each range. And this year's theme is space-related and universal of stories. Um, is what the theme is. So, I've provided that for you in that packet as well. We've got a number of programs in June and July's schedule. We also have three-D printing classes. Now, if you don't know what a three-D printer is, think of a copier that makes something more three-dimensional than just a sheet of paper. And in your packet is a nameplate that we were able to create from the staff at Darlington. Tommy Watkins has turned that into almost a cottage industry for himself, and he's was able to design and create that. And I've had that for each of you there as well. A couple of you got two of them because you're an officer of county council. So, if you're never an officer of county council in the future, you've got one that has your county district in it on it as well. And I said, I want to thank you all for our support and for the support you've provided us. And very quickly, I'll say, in two weeks, we're going to make a big announcement of something that probably no other library in the state of South Carolina has. So, stay tuned, and we'll be telling you that in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Personal appearances. Ms. Peggy Sheffield.
County council members, my name is Peggy Sheffield, and I represent the West End Heritage Corporation. We are a corporation that was formed several years ago in hopes to erect a memorial to the people that worked at the Darlington Manufacturing Company for many years, also known as the Cotton Mill. I'm here tonight to ask you for help. The mill was a vital part of Darlington's growth in its day. Our town was booming during those years, in eighteen eighty-three to nineteen fifty-six. When the mill closed in nineteen fifty-six, it employed around five hundred workers, and it was devastating to our towns and to its people. Many had to move away to find work. It has taken years for our town and our people to recover. We have raised enough money to purchase the land at the corner of Cleveland and Pearl Street and to pay for the monument. The lot is located in what was known as the Old Mill Village and is close to the Old Mill and the company store where many shot. We are now trying to raise enough money to complete this monument. We are hoping to raise between two, excuse me, twenty thousand to thirty thousand, uh, two, uh, or plus that, to finish the project. The more we raise, the more we'll be able to do. We want this memorial to look like a small park. I have passed out pictures to the council members to show you what we hope to accomplish. We would like to have landscaping and benches and a small wall around it. We want it to be invited for those who come to visit and read about the history of Darlington Manufacturing Company and those who worked there. The Cotton Mill is part of our history and our heritage, and very few are left to see that this is completed. The monument will be placed in the middle of the lot. On the front of the monument, we will have three pictures of the mill, and on the back will be a writing by Mr. Bill Shepherd dedicating the memorial to the memory and to the honor of the women and children who worked at the Old Mill. For those who worked there, or some of their family members who had worked there, pavers are being sold to have their names placed in memory or honor and placed around the bottom of the monument. The cost to pavers are fifty dollars. Also, we will have four levels that were recognized for those that donate. We hope that you will feel blessed to help us complete this memorial. And if any of you here present, members or family members, or dear friends that you know of that worked at the Cotton Mill, the Darlington Manufacturing Company, not even the other ones that came after that, man, but the Darlington Manufacturing Company, please see me, and I'll be glad to give you an application for that brick with your loved ones' name on that and replace it. Bye.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. May I ask her question? Yes. Mr. Sheffield, who do you have with you?
Please stand, members of the committee.
For the record, they give us their names, please.
This is Diane and Jim Kelly, Mr. Sam Grant, and Miss Becky Lee.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, please feel free to ask.
Mr. Chairman, this time I move to amend the agenda to bring forward executive session for the discussion of matters related to proposed location expansion for business services. Also, um, the encouraging of location or expansion industries for other businesses in the area served by the public office. Say it, Mr. Chairman. All the favor. Uh-huh. Put it on head. Mr. Chairman, this time I move that we go into executive session with members of council, our county attorney, our county administrator...
And others that need it.
And others that need it. Say it. Say it. All the favor. Uh-huh. All right.
Yes, sir. We need to work, work. You come late. Your honor.
Pretty good, though. Turned it on and off. So, that's pretty, we still...
Executive session, no actions taken. Mr. Chairman, this time I move to bring forward the rest of resolutions, nine A and nine C. Resolution number seven oh one and resolution number seven oh three. Say it. All the favor. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. All right, that's a three. That's a good decision, resolution. Nine A, resolution number seven oh one. Inducement resolution providing for a fee in lieu of tax agreed between Dawson County and Project Heaway, which we ninety-eight. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of resolution number seven zero one. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Resolution nine C. Resolution number seven oh three, inducing and identifying a proposed investment under code name of project dates two and other matters related therewith. The motion? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number seven zero three. Say it. All the favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. The set agendas received as information, the community workforce development forward. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve as information items six A and six D under the set agenda. Say it. All the favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Approval of minutes. Minutes of Dawson County Municipal Council, County Council, Board of Education, and legitimate later delegation meeting April twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen. Motion?
I move to approve minutes.
Say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Seven B. Public hearing and Roger meeting, May the sixth, twenty nineteen. The motion? Say it. Say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Ordinance on regularity, Mr. Kilgo.
Thank you. Ordinance number nineteen oh four, an ordinance to amend Dawson County Code of Ordinance as Appendix A, Development Standards Ordinance, Article thirteen, requirement for mobile and manufactured homes, Section thirteen point two. Duty of owner to add language requiring the landowner, or, excuse me, landowner slash landlord to ensure that tenants register their mobile home and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. This is third reading. I move to approve.
Say it. Say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Item eight C. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance to amend Dawson County Code of Ordinance, Article eighteen, many camper sites, camper parks, and mixed-use camper parks to add a new section, eighteen dash two, entitled Duty of Owner, to require the landowner, landlord of many camper sites, camper parks, and mixed-use camper parks to ensure that tenants register their mobile home and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. Third reading, I move to approve this ordinance. Say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Item eight C. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero six, an ordinance to amend Dawson County Code of Ordinance, Chapter eight, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article four, established with the Fire Code, and Life Safety and Safety Enforcement Department. Appendix A, permit fee, to amend the electrical reconna- fee to exclude fee for reconnaissance of existing electrical service that will be active for no more than thirty days for special events only, and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. Third reading, move for approval of ordinance number nineteen dash zero six. Say it. Say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Mr. George.
Ordinance number nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance to amend Dawson County Code of Ordinance, Article eighteen, many camper sites, camper parks, and mixed-use camper parks to add a new section, eighteen dash two, entitled Duty of Owner, to require the landowner, landlord of many camper sites, camper parks, and mixed-use camper parks to ensure that tenants register their mobile home and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. Third reading, I move to approve this ordinance.
Say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Item eight C. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero six, an ordinance to amend Dawson County Code of Ordinance, Chapter eight, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article four, established with the Fire Code, and Life Safety and Safety Enforcement Department. Appendix A, permit fee, to amend the electrical reconna- fee to exclude fee for reconnaissance of existing electrical service that will be active for no more than thirty days for special events only, and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. Third reading, move for approval of ordinance number nineteen dash zero six. Say it. Say it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh-huh. All opposed, I have it. Eighteen, ordinance number...
Resolution number seven oh three inducing and identifying the proposed investment under code name of Project Dates Two and other matters related therefore. The motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number seven zero three.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
The Senate agendas received as information, the PD workforce development board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve as information items six A and six D under the Senate agenda.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
Approval of minutes. Minutes of Darlington County Municipal Council. County Council, Board of Education, and Legislator Delegation meeting April twenty ninth, twenty nineteen.
Motion?
I move to approve minutes.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
Seven B, Public Year and Renter Meeting Beta Six, twenty nineteen. The motion?
I move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Ordinance, number eight, Mr. Kielgo.
Thank you. Ordinance number nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance to amend Darlington County Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Developing Standards Ordinance, Article thirteen, Agreement for Mobile and Manufactured Homes, Section thirteen point two. Duty of owner to outline which requiring the landowner, or, excuse me, landowner slash landlord to ensure that tenants register their mobile home and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. This is third reading. I move the approval.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Mr. Joyce.
Ordinance number nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance to amend Darlington County Code of Ordinances, Article eighteen, many campus site, camper park, and mixed-use camper park to add a new section, eighteen dash two, entitled duty of owner to require the landowner, landlord of many campus sites, camper parks, and mixed-use camper parks to ensure that tenants register their mobile home and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. Third reading, I move to approve this ordinance.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
Item eight C, ordinance number nineteen dash zero six, ordinance to amend Darlington County Code of Ordinances, Chapter eight, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article four, Establishment of the Fire Code and Life Safety Inspection Enforcement Department, Appendix A, permit fee, to amend electrical reconnect fee to exclude fee for reconnecting existing electrical service that will be active for no more than thirty days for special events only, and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. Third reading, move for approval of ordinance number nineteen dash zero six.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
Eighteen, ordinance number nineteen dash zero seven, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, to provide for expenditures thereof and to provide for revenues for payment thereof as amended. Third reading, move for approval of ordinance dash of nineteen dash zero seven.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Mr. Douglas.
Ordinance number nineteen dash oh eight, an ordinance to fill the district's industrial alcohol reserve base. Planning for programs under make October eight, pursuant to six, six dash twenty-seven dash forty, B and twelve, dash thirty, dash two forty-five feet, and C of the nineteen seventy-six corner of North South Carolina, and the minimum of the Darlington County for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June the third, two thousand twenty. Third reading, I make the move that we set this up.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Dates.
A F, ordinance number nineteen oh nine. An ordinance to amend the Darlington County Code of Ordinances, Chapter two of Administration, Article four, Building, Board's Commissioning, Section two, two oh four, and Chapter eighteen, Emergency Service, Article two, Amulet, Session eighteen fifty-two, Amulet Service Commission, Session eight, Session eighteen fifty-six, and often operation out, um, franchise, Session eighteen fifty-seven, and forty fifty, and Session eighteen fifty-eight. Limiting of members by business in charge of Amulet's commission and Amulet's service district and establishing the effective date of this ordinance, second reading. I so move ordinance number nineteen oh nine.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
Ordinance number nineteen dash ten, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee agreement by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Project Heat Wave, providing for a payment on a fee in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. Second reading, move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Mr. Kielgo.
Ordinance nineteen eleven, an ordinance to amend Darlington County Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Article five, Finance, and Chapter forty-six, Purchasing, to update and clarify accounting, budgeting, and purchasing requir- regulations and establishment of the effective date of this ordinance. Second reading, found on page two ninety-one, move the approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
Joyce. Ordinance number nineteen dash twelve, authorizing pursuit of Title twelve, Chapter forty-four of the Code of Law for South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended. The execution and delivery of fee in lieu of, in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreements by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and certain companies identified collectively for the time being as Project Dates Two. Provide for fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentives and certain special source revenue credits and other related matters. Second reading, move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Mr. Flowers.
Item eight J, ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen, to amend the existing agreement governing the Darlington Florence Industrial Park by and between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Florence County, South Carolina, to enlarge the boundaries of the industrial park to include certain properties now or to be hereafter owned and/or operated by companies identified for the time being as Project Dates Two, located in Darlington and Florence County, South Carolina, and authorizing other related matters. Second reading, move for approval of ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it.
A K, ordinance number nineteen dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing pursuit of Chapter forty-four of Title twelve, South Carolina Code of Law, nineteen seventy-six, as amended. The execution and delivery of fee agreement from Darlington County, South Carolina, and Project Pete, and certain affiliates and matters related therefore. First reading, no action taken.
Orderance number nineteen dash fifteen, an ordinance approving an amendment to the agreement for development of a joint county industrial business, Article five, between Darlington County, South Carolina, and Lee County, South Carolina, and other, other matters related thereto. First reading, no action taken.
Eleven other items, appointments to Board's commission to deal vacancies, fire terms, the terms expiring six thirty nineteen, and attendance note individual, these terms have expired, will expire June the thirtieth. So we need to reappoint, there is still limit of the lower terms individual desirable of Board's commissions to be at page four eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mr. James A. Howard.
Second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, aye, have it.
Thank you.
Commandant to carry over. If you want.
Carry over.
Mr. Davis.
I so move to reappoint Mr. Lawrence Manning and Miss Callie Marie, and carry over his hands.
The motion?
He made the motion, is it?
Okay, the second motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Mr. Ray.
Carry over.
Carry over.
County Council, Economic Development Partnership.
And yeah, I nominate Barry Taylor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Eleven B, appointment to PD workforce development board.
They're requesting reappointment of Mr. Wayne Simmons. Simon, excuse me.
On PD work?
Yes.
Move to reappoint Mr. Wayne Simon. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Eleven C, bid award for resurancing. What is this?
Your, 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 your lane.
Need a motion? Need a motion? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. Eleven D, request to allow unspent budget disburse for sure service and detention center on current needs for sure service and detention center, page four thirty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the sheriff's request.
Any discussion?
I think the sheriff wanted to speak to y'all just a moment.
If I may.
Please.
I just want to personally say thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Y'all have been very gracious to all first responders this year, this upcoming budget. You know, me and Mr. Stewart have worked, he's worked tirelessly to provide everything that I've asked for. I have an unfilled staff position within my office, and after consulting with Mr. Stewart, I'd like to have your permission to give him so that I can move that staff fund, to spread that money out to all my road deputies and all supervisory personnel from my investigators. That will kind of help offset some of that extra money into salaries and stuff that we were looking for. And I think, uh, Mr. Stewart, like I said, worked tirelessly to crunch the numbers and stuff, and, uh, hoping I can get your approval because I can do that.
You don't, you don't have to have approval for that, but you let them know.
I just try to let you know I love, I won't let you know what we thought about doing, and, uh.
Can I ask a question? Excuse me, Sheriff, I was.
No, go ahead.
You said one staff position, or you have more than one?
Yes, ma'am. I have a big, yes, ma'am, I have.
One big.
I got two staffed, ladies.
Two staffed.
I want to tell you, one of the staff positions that apply to all the deputies, and supervisor, and my investigator that are on the supervisor. Because right now, we're competing with our sister agencies within the county, our two municipalities that are large, and we lose officers. We lose officers to the joining county. So I'm trying to be able to attract deputies to state and hire them.
All right.
Thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Eleven E, transfer.
We got, we got a vote. Yeah, we got a vote on the, on submitting budget funds.
All right, let's move.
I abstain. Mr. Kielgo, lieutenant, worked on the book.
It's yours.
Hey, I, I just want to make it clear, so that's all that he's asking for, just that amount that's unspent to go away.
As well.
Who, question, Mr. Jeff, you definitely take this in, or I get this from Sheriff?
That's for both of them. Yes, sir.
In your package is a list of charities which were in the state.
All aye, I understand. Limiting transfer of Home Avenue to this dash four twenty-nine to the Thane Baptist Health Care Center. The motion?
I move to approve the transfer of Home Avenue to the Thane Baptist Healthcare Center.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did we pick up any responsibility at all?
No, sir, this is, we just had first right refusal with the state to transfer this road to the.
Excuse me?
Aye.
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 Bid award for evidence store refill in sure service. Page four fifty-one. Need a motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, same reason.
All opposed, go ahead. You have a question?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Okay, I need for him, and he can, um, just kind of clarify that evidence stores bill. What's all that supposed to be?
Evidence that we seized and stuff.
So where's that, excuse me, where's that store now?
Where's?
Yes, sir.
Some of it's in the quantum, right down the road here, and some of it's inside the building of the sure service itself.
This is the one that got blew down during the storm, correct?
You've already approved the building itself last year.
Now, we've got.
This is just a bit of wood.
Just a bit of wood.
Yes, ma'am.
I just can't understand, say, where it was.
Yes, ma'am, and it'll be built right here behind the gym. Actually, right here, it was vacant lot, right, right behind this building here. It was right around here.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye, have it. One, flame, Kielgo. Let's ready to look at it.
I have nothing for you other than what we've already done tonight. I will tell you that we are still pending to hear from the administrative officer, the hearing officer that you appointed, Mr. John, or Judge John Miller, over the cell tower contest, for a bid. When we hear from him, we'll get that brought back before council, and Mr. Cox will check if he can try to have something by then.
Sure. Yes, may I ask him a question? Yes. Michael Baker.
That was part of the text to you today, I have some additional information on that. We are still working back and forth with them to get the first draft.
Okay.
So we're, we're in process, we're going back and forth.
You just say July one?
I hope July one.
Either they had to let, let a fire unburn.
That would make us have to go out for bid for a totally new company, if, if we can't get progress.
Okay.
I think that would be the way to go.
Okay, we hadn't paid him anything.
Not for this project.
Thank you. Question, I'm going to ask the councilman, Mr. Kielgo.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, on the West End request, first of all, I would have to abstain because I drew up the documents and I'm still a part of committee. But I hope that somebody will put that on the butt, on the agenda for next time, uh, the request, because it's not on here right now. It's at the presentation. I'll leave that with that, y'all decide what you want to do. Been a good first six months, I think we've made a lot of progress. Talked to fire chief a few minutes ago, please don't throw a cigarette out your window. Please don't light a match outside. All we're gonna have is one heck of a fire, and I don't want to, thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I might be a little behind here, but I'm still, and I have the, um, request for fuel and salary savings, so where would this, I'm talking back to Sheriff again, in reference to the, this equipment and, and things, you know, this, so where, where would that come from?
Well, I'm going to answer that for you.
Okay, okay.
All these numerous line items, the total cumulative savings there, as we closed the budget books in, about to say I'm total, in August. What you've approved is the list of additional needs that he has, whatever money's left in this year's current budget that we're still in now, the new budget that starts in July, that we use those funds that are still budgeted to the Sheriff's Department of Detention Center to then pay for these needs. Most of these needs are needs that you're gonna have to pay for anyway out of an upcoming budget, whether it be the next budget or the next, which is like laptop replacements, they're still running two thousand eight laptops. Those are eleven-year-old laptops now that need to be replaced, um, radios for cars, you're gonna have to replace radios for cars, some locking systems in the detention center. A lot of those things are gonna have to be done, whether we do it out of money from this year's budget that has not been spent, or we have to spend it out of contingency next year, or new budgeted funds to follow. So it's to our, it's to the county and taxpayer strategic advantage to use these unbudgeted, I mean, these unspent funds that are already budgeted and planned as part of balanced books for the close of this year. So a lot of those are salary line items that, especially detention center, where physicians were open, and, you know, in detention, it's extremely hard to keep employees. The state has a hard time, and they pay way better than we do for detention center officers.
And that, that was just a question I had, because of staff, and people leaving.
It's not all that, but it, it, some of it is staff, some of it may be a fuel line item, some of them may be a repair, maintenance line item where didn't spend all the money out of there. The better year you have on gas prices, the better year you have, and the more newer equipment we bring in-house, that you don't have as much repairs and maintenance on the older equipment, the better those line items due throughout the year. But Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, EMS, the nine-one-one center, those things have to be budgeted to keep running, or, or we'll be.
And I just have one more question I want to ask. Hire the buildings, you know, because we haven't done a capital improvement project, per se, and, and I just have not heard that, so hire the.
One thing that you'll probably see during the fall is in the valuation of our buildings and where we may have to spend money in different buildings. We, we slowly continue to upgrade elevator system in courthouse, um, exit signing ADA bathrooms in different buildings. By the way, we're in the process of going for bids now for upgrades at the Hart School Outreach Building for bathrooms and ADA access, marriage disability access for the Hart School Building, like was done in the Darlington building. So we're constantly doing that, but we'll have to look at larger scope projects as we move on down the road.
Okay, so how are we doing with the bathrooms in the courthouse?
The bathroom, there's nothing. We haven't started any ADA upgrade there.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to say, I just appreciate the, uh, the effort, uh, that was put into this budget, this budget cycle, and how well everything was produced and laid out for us, and I appreciate, uh, council, um, hard work in, in going through it, and making this one of the most enjoyable six months that has been on council. So thank you.
I, I would just like to recognize Mr. Sheffield and the committee, um, for your efforts, your time, because it's important. This is how things in the county and community get preserved, um, as individuals that care, and I just, I wish you the best. Good luck in your fundraiser, I appreciate your time coming here, and, uh, it's, it's a vital part to, to any community when you have people investing their time and interest, so congratulations to you for your time, and thank you, and best of all.
Thank you for that, let's go.
I want to thank administrative councils for all the support together on this thing. I've been here sixty years.
been here sixteen years, as the flowers say, I've been this easy as here, I've been hand in. But I really thank everybody for working together, for being there for being there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'd like to first thank y'all for, council members, for giving the resolution to Mother Stevenson, thank you again. I probably give one of the heads to the sheriff, the head of the fire department, do y'all have enough of this opening problems going on, do y'all have any, y'all equipped with the shootings going on in this area? I'm hoping that God knows nothing will happen out there, but are y'all equipped, are y'all trained? I'm just asking, I know y'all probably is, but I'm just asking, I don't get updates, I'm new to this, I don't know what the schedule is, what the criteria is, I'm just asking. Next thing I want to do is thank you, Mr. Eastman, for the library department for the package, I'm saving that right here. Empty, empty, thank you again for the package. And last but not least, I'm glad it was brought up a few minutes ago, the bathroom, I was at the courthouse prior to paying taxes, and I asked a young lady, she down by the sheriff department, she looked, chased down me, but I ain't called her no name, and I used the restroom, there's no restroom on the bottom floor, she told me I had to go up, but when I was fit to go up, there was a deputy saying, you can't go up right now, I thought it was running a prison, we got to do something, we got to do something, I don't know, there should be a restroom down there for the sheriff department for our visitors that come in, there was ten to twelve people standing there who couldn't use the help, and you had to use the restroom, you had to wait for the visitors to go up, or go upstairs. Like I say, I'm new to this, but something got to be done, and we, we mauling the seventh, third, fourth, fifth floor, why we can't have a fucking restroom somewhere in that courthouse, downstairs, you know, it don't make no sense, like I say, I'm new, somebody please let me know something. But why our officers have to go upstairs, why our public got to go upstairs across the street to use the restroom, there's nothing downstairs. Thank you, Mr. Eastman.
I was just thinking. Sitting there, what we all need to think about was Mr. Mother Stevenson, hundred and two years old, when she's singing her life, he said every morning, the bus was stopping from her house, and she fed every person that needed to be fed, she could, they got off the school bus, she fed every kid that needed to be fed, think about that. She raised eleven children. We all could take that.
The Chairman, I move to place on the agenda the West End request for our meeting in July.
In second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, I have it.
At one time, I was thinking the world would back from me, I feel. Get pulled up, get stuck in the way, that's why I'm checking on that.
Thank you to all our employees, you do a wonderful job, thank you for coming, sheriff's office, thank you for working with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Making things happen for the better of our community, and thank you again for helping Lamar, and kind of keeping an eye on that, for society healing, we appreciate it, and that's all I have, and most of the week, I turn.
Move for adjournment.
Thank you.